I'd like to call the meeting into order if you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Goff.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We would be at the approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on January 3rd, 2023. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make the motion.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Will be comments from the audience? If anyone is here tonight to address the board, if you'd come forward to the podium and give your name and address and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Anyone here tonight to address the board? I'll call you up in just a minute, but thank you. All right, public comment going once, twice. Public comment is closed. Any old business come before the board? We do have an update on the Williams property that Trustee Weisenberg asked about, so Mr. Aldridge, are you going to give that?
Yes, I did speak with Dave Williams. That agreement has expired. That was for six properties that were conveyed to the developer years ago, and that was extended. They still intend to build on those properties, and I would recommend, because they own other properties in the village, we may want to be in discussions with them about maybe redoing the redevelopment agreement for other properties they own, anticipating increased density primarily in their development. One of those properties, these six properties, they've actually acquired some other properties adjacent to them, and that looks like maybe a bigger development. So at this point, I recommend that we'll just, we'll talk to them, get them involved, and see what we can do as far as a new redevelopment agreement that may be more attractive to both parties.
Trustee Weisenberg?
I don't think we initially had a redevelopment agreement with them, did we, for the residential properties? We just sold them the properties.
It was this agreement to sell the property.
With the expectation they were going to build.
My mistake. So I'd rather we, you know, actually parlay this into a redevelopment agreement for more properties.
We had an agreement, I mean, as far as a timeline and what they would do and the options they would have after that, but I don't think it was a redevelopment agreement.
Right.
Yeah. It was a sale of the properties with the understanding that they would build on the properties.
Can you keep us, can you proceed with that, Mr. Aldridge, and keep us updated then?
Yes.
Does there any other old business come for the board? We'll get right into new business. The first is the approval of the consent agenda. Trustee DeVore asks for that approval.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone who'd like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next is approval of ordinance 2023-1692, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 1 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of adding a new classification of liquor license for the sale of beer brewed on the licensed premises. Trustee DeVore asks for approval.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1692.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
So with new development coming forward, that business would require liquor license that we don't currently carry. So I think due to council recommending that we add this new class of license where it would allow them to brew beer and sell it, correct? Okay, I don't know if you, if you, council wants to add anything to that?
This new Class J liquor license added to the code will operate the retail sale of beer, wine, and ale, including beer brewed on site, as well as the sale of fully sealed containers of beer brewed on site.
Thank you, and please correct me if I misspeak, council. So what, as Liquor Commissioner, I'm asking the board to add a license, and then it would be my intention to issue that license. I was approached to issue the license, but there was none to issue in this category, so that's what we're doing. And I'd like to invite Brian and Amber to come up. If you'd like to come up, tell us about your plans, please.
Good evening. My name is Amber, and this is my husband, Brian, and we're the people behind Busted Brewing. We wanted to just take a moment and tell you a little bit about ourselves, our plan for the brewery, and also answer any questions that you might have. A little bit about myself, I'm a special education teacher, and I work with adults with disabilities. I help transition them from life, help them find work in the community, and teach them how to keep their jobs as well. And this is my husband, Brian.
Hi, my name is Brian. I currently work as ERP administrator for Natural Fiber Welding, which is another startup here in Peoria. Previous to that, I worked several years as a contract engineer at Caterpillar and was the original head brewer when industry brewing first opened back in 2018. We emailed you a part of our business plan ahead of time, but there's some specifics I wanted to touch on. The system I'm brewing on is three barrel. For those of you not familiar with the barrel measurement, that's equal to about six half-barrel kegs that you traditionally see in bars and restaurants. And our intention or our projection for the first year is to brew about 150 barrels of beer and hopefully sell all of it. We have a projected revenue of about $250,000 that first year, and then we project about a 20% growth every year after that, and also hopefully grow into distribution as well.
I don't know how much you guys know about craft beer. Prior to meeting, Brian, I didn't know much about it either, but things have definitely changed. When we travel to places, that's the first thing that we do once we set up our Airbnb or when we go to the hotel is we're looking for breweries that we can go and support. While drinking at local bars with Craft Brew is a hobby of ours, going to the source is a totally different experience. So I took everything that I loved from visiting breweries, and I tried to put that into busted brewing. I'm calling it kind of our starter home at the old subway, because that is kind of where we want to start, and our plan is to eventually grow and hopefully distribute. So things that we're looking at on the inside is just a room for people at the bar. We have communal tables for people to sit and enthusiasts and have conversations about the brews, and then a little lounge area that's just kind of a hangout area. Our hope is to have games and honestly to create a community within our busted brewing. We would also use the outside drive-through, and people would be able to go to the window and order beers from the outside section as well. And there'll be communal tables and stuff, and then also little sections that are kind of lounge and leisure out front as well. Brian?
Obviously, you can tell we're pretty excited about our new venture and finally bringing brewery back to the heights. I don't know about you, but I'm excited to be the first operating brewery since Pabst Building left in the early 80s. We know parking has been somewhat of a concern, just given the nature of the building, and we actually, I had a chance to talk with the owners of Jupskers, which I see in the audience here tonight, and that correspondence was included in the packet that you, that we sent to you, and obviously you can see there's not going to be much of an issue. We do have a total of about 23 spots available on our premises to be able to hold hopefully everybody that comes and visits us. And it just says, I mean, me and my wife, we come visit the heights very often, you know, we find a spot to park, and we end up walking and visiting places for hours. And, you know, that's part of what we love about this community and what we want to be a part of. So, and we know our customers are going to be okay, hopefully doing the same as we have. So I think with that, any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you for being here tonight, and thanks to Jeff and Martha for being here to be good neighbors, so appreciate that. Trustee DeVore, I'm going to go back to you, and then we'll open it up for questions. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I do not.
All right, any questions?
So you had mentioned that you expect to grow at 20%, 10 to 20% each year.
Yep.
This is just your starter home. I hope things are extremely successful for you.
Thank you.
And if they are, are you planning on staying in the Village of Peoria Heights?
Yep.
That would be our home.
Yep. Yep.
Awesome.
As far as the creation of this Class J license under Brew Pub, does this have any, is there any requirement for food involved with this license?
No.
None? Is there any plan to have any food offerings in this?
Not outside, and maybe some snack stuff that we buy from other vendors. I've already actually had a talk with some local businesses about getting some stuff for us. We feel that within two blocks, there's a dozen restaurants, and we would just rather leave that to the professionals.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. I'll get that license to you ASAP, so.
Awesome, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thanks for choosing the heights, and wish you well.
Thanks.
I'm just going to pause right here, because we did approve the consent agenda. I don't know if there's anyone here, these have already been approved, but from the St. Jude Walk or Walk for the MS or Friday Night Heights or cystic fibrosis, did anybody want to approach the podium and tell us about your event? Okay, good, we didn't miss anyone then. All right, the next item is approval of ordinance 2023-1693, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Business Development District Number One redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and Kathleen L. Faletti and Faletti LLC. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
Okay, so this is referring to, this looks familiar to all of us, because we've actually already approved the Business Development District money to support this, but their cost sheet, I think from what I understand, didn't, wasn't turned in within the timeframe of that agreement. So we're just extending it in order to pay the Faletti, like Faletti, rather. And if Wayne Aldridge can answer any further questions if there are any.
We'll leave it in the air, Wayne.
I think that that basically explains it, just a technicality, extend the agreement to allow.
Any questions?
Well, this for like the outside.
It's for the sidewalk between the two businesses, Sullivan's and E-Mac's.
Right.
Yeah, they redid that, made it really cute.
Yep.
Safer.
It's also very nice.
It is.
Also, when you have, when you're like trying to get back to that.
It is. It was great.
I remember in the original agreement, didn't we have, is this an agreement, is this amendment necessary? Because didn't we have an extension, that they could ask for an extension if?
It wasn't, it wasn't a timeline, I think it was just a minor discrepancy in the figures. Yeah. And normally, we will, we will grant an extension if they need more time for construction or something.
Okay.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of a street closure and use of Tower Park for the Peoria Heights Fine Art Fair on Saturday, May 13th and Sunday, May 14th, 2023. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
Well, I think I see Jane in the audience there. You want to come, come up?
I'm Jane Johnson, president of the Peoria Heights Arts Collaborative that was formed in 2019 as a 501(c)(3) to support the ACE Corridor for Arts, Culture, and Entertainment. We are asking for a two-day art fair this year because many, many, many of the artists have requested that. And so it would take a two-day street closure, and we have a budget that we, I gave everybody late, because we were late getting to this meeting, actually, on time-wise as far as what we have for getting the application process going, moving forward. There is a request in the budget for the Village of Peoria Heights to do a $5,000 donation. If we need to come back at another time to ask for that, that would be fine, but I don't know what else you have, questions?
Welcome, Maggie. Good to see you. What's your role in all this?
This is Maggie Martino, who we have engaged as an independent contractor to do, to run the art fair for us this year with her, along with our board members and her, and volunteers. So.
Okay, questions, trustees?
So. I had a question about a two-day street closure. What's, can you describe that in more detail? What's going to be closed, from where to where?
Oh, I'm sorry. As in the past, it's, well, last year it was from Kelly to Glen, and we would request the same for this year.
Two days, not opening at night?
No, that's the advantage of why the artists like to come, because they can set up. We would have security that we would pay for, for overnight, and the real advantage is that would keep probably 70 artists and their mates or families in the village that night to, in this area. They come from all over, and they just would be here, shopping, eating, sleeping.
Well, I've, you know, I've visited the art fair before. It's well-run, it's a terrific attraction.
Thank you.
And my only concern is closing the main thoroughfare through Peoria Heights for two full days, when our businesses and the restaurants that are along there would, this would be a Saturday and Sunday?
Yes.
That's Saturday night, there's no traffic coming through town. It's just a concern that I have.
Okay.
So you're suggesting that they set up the booths and then they leave them there overnight with the art inside?
Yes. And I think it would attract even more people for that, that Saturday night, to have the art fair. They could go longer, and they, the advantage too is it's a shorter day on Sunday, and they would have more time to break down their tents and everything. Set up and breakdown are the two most labor-intensive things an art fair has for an artist.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Is this the same art fair that?
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah, I was thinking.
Yes. It's a Peoria Heights.
Yeah, okay. That's all the questions I have. I wasn't really prepared to vote on the request of finances this evening, but.
Well, that's not, that's not part of the resolution.
No, and that's fine. We weren't, we, we put it in here so that you would have a budget for a one-day versus a two-day, and what the expenses are. The collaborative is putting in $5,000, and we expect to, I mean, we could get donations.
Although, Trustee Kazam, I think in fairness, if anyone had any, I would appreciate if people would express any opposition to the $5,000 tonight, so that we know that ahead of time. I would hope there, there wouldn't be. But this group, you know, did, in my opinion, they did everything that we have asked them as a board to do, to take over managing all things art, and then to become a 501(c)(3) to go out and raise their own money, which you have, and you have, you have your share of funds to go into.
Yes, we do.
Promoting this.
And, and we aren't just the art fair. We, we now have a poetry project that's going on, we're looking at other projects. So we are trying to build all kinds of things going on in the village, and for the.
Thank you for that.
So I want to thank, also thank the organization, and this, this is taking on a potential two-day, because I know one day is, is a lot, and I really admire the ambitious nature of this project. I think my concern also falls with what Trustee Goff is saying about, and I don't, I think having a two-day event is absolutely fine. I think closing the road overnight is where you're going to have some issue, especially, you know, we have potentially 70 vendors, but we also are putting out potentially a multiple of that for the business owners that run from Glen to Kelly, which encompasses all the way down to, I think, the Edge Restaurant on that side. So I, you know, I don't, I think we can definitely do a two-day event, but I think the overnight closure of the road is going to become extremely problematic for not only the, the business owners along that path, but also, you know, again, it's the main road that runs through Peoria Heights. So I think, you know, as far as opportunities for the arts collaborative, as far as this budget is concerned, we could eliminate the overnight security potentially from the budget by just not having that road closed overnight. But I think the overnight road closure is going to be extremely problematic.
Well, let me just interject that this is also saving us money, because we'll be probably paying overtime to Public Works to tear down the street at night and then to close it back in the morning, so.
I, I.
Chief Sutton and I talked about this at length, maybe not, about the.
Can I go real quickly? Mayor, I too share the concerns of Trustee Wigginton and Trustee Goff, but what hasn't been mentioned yet is the fact that we're going to close this road for two days and send all that traffic through residential neighborhoods for two days. I've expressed this concern before. If we're going to have that closed for two days in May, which generally has very good weather, are we going to pull our police officers off other areas and station them to make sure people aren't speeding through the, through the neighborhoods? There's a lot of kids, fortunately, running around the streets these days, and people do not drive well down Prospect. And if we're going to close it for two complete days, that's a lot of traffic through the neighborhoods. I know the police department has done a wonderful job in the years past of reducing the speed limit, putting up the signs, but as we know, people still go as fast as they want to go, so.
Well, regarding the two-day, I'll, I'll address that first, and to answer your question, Trustee Weisenberg, and yes, if we do a two-day, we have to close it overnight, will that pull resources and police from other, yeah, because as you know, the way we police that pretty heavily in the residential areas. So yeah, that, to answer your question, yes, but if you're having a one-day, it wouldn't be an overnight closure, obviously. The way Public Works sets it up in the morning, we help take down at night, so it's been a team effort, so it really has not been an overnight closure on the, just the one-day event. But a two-day event, like I've always said, the mayor and I did discuss that if the board approves it, I'll make it safe, but will it, will it take, you know, other resources, more officers on? Yes, I mean, it will, obviously, so hopefully that answers your question.
It does.
Yep.
May I speak?
Sure.
Is there, again, I'm Maggie Martino, and I've been engaged by the collaborative to organize this. Is there a compromise? For example, artists do not want to take down their tents after the first day and put them up the second day. I mean, I know that, I've been at art fairs. If the tents were along both sides of the street, could we leave one lane in each direction open?
We, we tried that a couple of years ago and tried to leave one side open, and it was just a major public safety issue.
Okay.
The only, the only way I would feel safe is bringing in some major barricades, like the concrete stuff, but it was very costly when we looked into it. It was just, it was really disaster and really a huge, huge public safety issue, so that's why we decided just to close the road and reroute the traffic. And it's worked very well, it really has. We've had a handful of events where we've rerouted the traffic, but it does take a few more resources, you know, to make it safe, but, you know, we did try that a couple of years ago.
Would it be as unsafe to do, like, when the fine art fair closes, could we run those two lanes open while it's closed, or you think there's still the same public safety issue?
You still, you still have a public safety issue, but then I also worry about, you know, the product being damaged and which I'll getting, without getting too much into that, and what we see on Prospect throughout the night. If you could read between the lines what I'm saying, I would hate to see somebody's, you know.
We would be, well, I think that collaborative will be willing to pay for additional security.
Yeah. Well, it's not so much that, it's the, the also, which we will gladly accept, don't get me wrong, but it, but it's also the, the tents and the damaged material. I mean, as far as security, I have a lot of questions there. Do you have, you said you have some budgeted money for security, for overnight security that you're talking about?
We have a line item in the budget, but right now, we don't have a figure for that, because we just didn't know what it was.
Okay, okay. So that's someone you would hire?
Yes.
So is the total village contribution 10,000 then? Not 5,000, you had mentioned 5,000, but I see two days.
No, it's, this is showing you the difference between if they only did a one-day event or if they did a two-day event.
It's 5,000, we, we'll, it's one day or two day.
Oh, okay. All right.
I think if we do a two-day, that's, it is a major parking thought, like, is a thought to my mind. Have you guys reached out to, like, park it behind the Pabst Building or any of, any of the Williams property to see if we could acquire more parking there, or no parking talks have been had at all?
We have, I have. We have not at this point, because we didn't know if we were going to need additional parking.
I just think the, like, the people, for that whole thing to be closed, a lot of the restaurants, I think their biggest detriment is going to be where are people going to park, right? Because we lose a lot of parking spots that way. So I think we're going to have to have a plan, if we close overnight, where people are going to park for, to go to dinner that night.
Well, the word must be out, because I've already received a handful of calls from the businesses inquiring about the event, if it's going to be a one-day or two-day, and there, it was no hostile conversation, just a little bit of concern on how they were going to operate their business if it was completely shut down all weekend. So I think the call, the word's starting to get out, and there is a little bit of concern, but again, it's not a hostile conversation, they just want to understand how they're going to get around it, so, and I said, I'm not sure, I know that, believe that's what's being asked at tonight's board meeting, so, but as we move forward, I would say if the board does approve it, we need to contact the businesses and let them know what to expect. Because it's a little bit, this is, this is a little bit different than just the shutting down the one day. It's really, and our Public Works Department does a great job of opening up the road, getting it open soon as, you know, activities are over.
Well, a couple of suggestions. One, if you're ready to approve this tonight, we can do that, or we can defer this to the next meeting, and we can ask the collaborative to hand-build the businesses on the streets that's going to be impacted and make them aware there's a public meeting coming up.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Superintendent Chandler, do you know when the, the hill's going to be closed?
We don't have a date on that.
I mean, if that were to happen at the same time, that could be a little detrimental to our operations, getting down below the hill by having that closed for that weekend. It would, if we could make sure that didn't coordinate at the same time, it would be great.
Yeah, we're still waiting on that date, though, yes.
Maggie just asked me, is there a possibility that we could do the art fair in Tower Park and your parking lot for two days?
Well, if you're going back years ago, it, I think it started here.
It started here, yes, it did.
We used to have it here, and it was very successful, and I think it got, started to get a little bigger, so they decided to take it down there, but I think.
Needed more space.
That'd be a great alternative, if it's enough room.
Or, I mean, theoretically, and I'm, no, I'm just, hey, just, just talking ideas here, but if you have people who sign up for the two-day, then they could be in Tower Park, and the people who just do one day could be along the one-day we close Prospect. But again, I, I don't.
How many vendors?
Never thought about that option, but it might be really a good one.
Well, I don't, maybe we're not ready to approve this tonight. My reaction would be is that it's, it's a good spot, but if we as a community are having arts to bring people to the community to spend money, a lot of people are just going to get in their car from Tower Park and go home, and they're not going to go in to the businesses, but may, maybe they are, maybe the.
Well, unfortunately, we have to have a decision tonight. We are already about a month behind on the application process. We have people asking us, when, when are we going to be able to apply? Is it going to happen? So.
Artists are already making their. Artists are already making their plans for what art fairs are going to be.
So one day or two-day at this point, if we can just do a one-day, that's fine. And if you approve the two-day, we'll do a two-day. We just need to unfortunately have a decision tonight.
Is there a way for us to approve a one-day and then have you start to get vendors and then revisit this? Or do you have to offer to artists?
We have, we have to put it out on application as what it is.
And our, it sound, I didn't, even occur to me that some artists would be here for just one day, but is that a possibility? Some artists make, just commit to one day?
I don't think so. They will. I mean, they always have come just for one day.
But I mean, I guess what I-
If we have the option of the one-day, two-day.
Well, on the budget, on the budget you submitted, you have an application fee and then a booth fee for one day versus two days.
Right.
You are thinking that's a possibility?
No, we were just using that as an example for the difference between the one-day and the two-day.
Okay.
Total, what the budget would be.
If I can make a suggestion just for the Tower Park idea. I mean, closing Prospect right here at Glenn to Kingman is way less of a hindrance on the community. I mean, you could gather a lot of room with this big opening in Prospect right here, over to the sidewalk, to the church side.
And use the parking lot, is what you're suggesting? So you use the parking lot, Tower Park and that second Prospect?
Yeah.
I mean, I, if they could fill Tower Park in the street first, keep that open for parking lot, they sell out, use that for more vendors. But then it still keeps people in the street and maybe still trying to push them down toward, right, the businesses.
The only thing I worry about with Glenn is that chief Thompson is-
Do we just leave like from this corner?
From the corner.
From Glenn to Kingman, right here.
Okay.
I mean, I think that would be a lot better than closing the whole.
Uh, before we, before we pursue this further, do we have access to the calendar to, to see if we've, anyone else has Tower Park in either one of those days?
Um, we had Tower Park on ours, so I guess not.
Stephanie, would you know?
Um, I believe this request is for use of Tower Park, so we should be okay to schedule full use of the parking lot as well.
From what you know, we've not, we've not approved anyone else using it that day.
Not approved anything. No, not that I'm aware of.
Mayor, if I may, there, there's still the playground issue, you know, where, depending on the weather, we may not start on that until March. And so, I mean, that's, that made crunches a little bit on the playground.
So there could be some equipment around?
Yes.
Tower Park area?
Could be some fenced-off areas there, but I, I-
No, thanks for bringing that up.
We could get that done, you know, completed this spring before that May period, but it's just a warning.
So ladies, we are building an accessible park and that construction may be underway then?
Understand.
Just goes one day.
We'll settle for one day.
We'll do one day. We'll do one day on Prospect. I mean, we're trying to be, you know, easy to work with.
We are just trying to have the art fair on the same weekend. And this year, we were a month behind on getting to the trustee meeting. So we can do a one day.
Well, I'm going to try and move this forward. So we do have a resolution on the floor. If it's entertain any amendments, but right now it's for two days to close down.
Yeah, I don't know what amendment-
So if someone would like to offer an amendment, I'm open to that, but let's try and move it forward.
How soon do you think you'll find out when the drive will be closed down here? I mean, you have no idea.
Yeah, not sure. I mean, we, you know, somebody has to bid on the project and then they have to plan up with when they can do it.
Yeah, not anytime soon. So I, I kind of feel like there's not an amendment to be made right now. Our hands are tied. Although we would love to ultimately have a two-day event, for sure.
We'd have to amend it to one day.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I, I would definitely agree with you that in the time between now and then, let's all sit down and plan for a two-day event in the future and how we can make that happen. I think, I, I just hate kind of throwing out ideas out here at the meeting and then trying to figure out how it would work.
Right, that's fine. That's fine.
So-
We just, we just want it to happen.
So with that-
Do you want it on May, on the Saturday or the Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Okay, so I make an amendment to approve the street closure of the use of Tower Park for Peoria Heights Fine Art Fair on Sunday, May 14th, 2023.
Saturday.
Or pardon me, yeah, pardon me, Saturday, May 13th, 2023.
All right, was that a second trustee Goff?
Yes.
All right. On the amendment, any discussion on the amendment? Madam clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Just a moment, please. Okay, I have the amendment as trustee Kazam, making a motion to amend the approval for a street closure of Prospect Road and use of Tower Park for the Peoria Heights Fine Art Fair on Saturday, May 20th, or May 13th, 2023, with trustee Goff seconding. Is that correct, trustees?
Correct.
All right. Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, so back to the main motion as amended. Madam clerk, call the roll on that, please.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, so it's approved for one day. Sorry for the confusion, but good luck to you on-
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. And next year, we'll, we'll think more about it. And we, we have use of Tower Park, so if we decide that, you know, some want to be there Sunday, well, we'd have to ask for approval. We'll be back.
We'll just go, we'll do one day.
Okay, next is approval of ordinance 2023-1694, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system. Trustee Wigginton, it asks for motion to approve?
I move to approve ordinance 2023-1694.
Second. Okay, go ahead. Trustee Wigginton?
Uh, so all of us should be very familiar with the MABUS system. As we've discussed this in very thorough detail of how our volunteer fire department here in the Heights utilizes the mutual aid box alarm system. Included in your packet is that agreement, how all of our local neighbors and friends and first responders from our neighboring communities, how they would mutually agree to respond to and give aid to other departments in and around the area. So I know that this is very important to our community, and so I would encourage our board to approve this ordinance.
Any discussion? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right. Any miscellaneous business?
I got a couple of things I can mention. The water, the water main on Lake Street that goes over to the golf course is in the ground. Water has been charged in it. It will be getting pressure tested tomorrow. And then there'll be a process of getting a working permit for it, but that is going good. The flat roof on the observation tower over here, company began work on that last week. They were working on it today. And then we did some sidewalk work down in the Marietta 700 block. And we had a, the citizen reached out and was very pleased with the work that was done. They feel it's a lot safer now.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor and chief Sutton, do we have a date yet on when the water consultant will present its report? And if we don't, can we lock them into a date?
Wayne, do you want to answer that question?
Well, we're, we're in the, in the stages of the financing part of the project at this point. So I, I think our schedule is now the end of February, which will coincide, we think, with the budget. But that's, that's the schedule at this point.
And that'll be a series of recommendations and-
Yes, meetings, you know, with a smaller group of trustees and could be, you know, a workshop potentially, things like that, and potentially public meetings as well.
Is, is there any way we can reach out and start setting dates for some of these meetings?
Yes.
I know there are several of us that are very passionate about this topic, but also have very busy schedules. And I don't want to miss some of these meetings that are coming up. I know other trustees have things too. Like, is there any way we can start locking them down on some of that?
Yeah, we can do that. We can, we can shoot for some goals and some, some meetings, yes.
Yeah, and if we could possibly schedule the public meetings and make sure that we have them on the website and Facebook. Because I know there's a lot of public interest on the water issue. So also allowing our very busy citizens to be able to schedule to attend it as well is very important to this whole process.
And that may, maybe we might, might want to dedicate one entire night just to nothing else but talking about their recommendations. But I, I think we'll have to digest those too, once we get their recommendations. So Wayne, you'll get working on-
We're speaking with the consultant, I think, Monday on scheduling other things. And so we'll, we'll discuss that with them. I'll reach out to them this week as well. Just think about scheduling, definitely scheduling.
And do, do we want to, was there any other news that we wanted to talk about?
Or under miscellaneous business?
Oh, no, I was just curious. So that's it.
All right.
Is it, I'm sorry, mayor, was there any news from DC at all?
Uh, well, I thought we announced it at the last meeting.
We can, yeah, I announced tentatively at the last meeting, so you're all aware. But there has been an appropriation for the Prospect Road project for Phase 1 engineering of $2 million, so.
Yeah, thank you. I thought we announced that last meeting. Forgive me if I-
It was more tentative last meeting because we didn't, but this has been confirmed by this Congressman Hood. So we anticipate that there'll be some sort of announce, more public announcement, you know, that'll be scheduled between the village and Congressman Hood.
So incidentally, if, if the road is redone, that would be wider sidewalks. We wouldn't have to close the road.
All these things will be discussed with the public and with the board when we get into the-
And thanks for bringing that up. Thanks to Congressman Hood, who's been terrific representing Peoria Heights. And he fought for that, that money. So we're excited to get it and we'll put it to good use. Anything else?
I wanted to mention, mayor, that the fire department won a grant for two iPads to help us out with preventive maintenance on our equipment.
Good. No, thank you, chief. Wayne, is there anything you want to report on that we haven't heard?
None at this time.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to payment of the bills. I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
There's a second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion or any question on any of the bills? Madam clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, the bills are paid. We'd be at the treasurer's report. Madam clerk?
As of the end of December, there are, in the village-controlled accounts, there was $7,269,411.64. In the water-controlled account, there was $2,053,098.18.
You've heard the treasurer's report. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the report. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
The treasurer's report is approved. Trustee Gett?
I make a motion to adjourn.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? We're adjourned.